Call the meeting to order, ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item tonight is we have a recognition of a city servant. We're gonna make sure that we recognize her 15 years of service. Amanda? Come on up.
I've only been here a short time Amanda, but I do appreciate all your efforts and your dedication to the city.
Me too.
It'll have to go for us too. Yeah, we're not that cheap. We do give a plaque out award, but it's not here yet, so she'll be getting, she'll be getting that in October or November, whenever. We got one more this year and we'll do them both at the same time. No, it's not you. Tonight's consensus consists of the following items. Item A, schedule a truth and taxation public hearing for Tuesday, December 5th, 2023 at 6:00 PM in the city council chambers at Winston City Hall. Item B, authorize the Winston Police Chief or Descany to close a portion of Main Avenue to through traffic Friday, October 6th, 2023, in conjunction with the rededication of the Winston Post Office in honor of James A. Rogers. Item C, adopt resolution R-23-34, accepting donations from various donors to be dedicated to the Winston Police Department Capital Improvement Fund. Item D, adopt resolution R-23-35, accepting contribution from TDS Telecom Service in the amount of $300 to be dedicated toward the Winston Holding Activities that Unite People What Up Organization. Item E, approve the pledge securities that Security Bank and Trust Company has purchased for the city of Winston for the month of August 2023. Item F, approve the building permit for the month of August 2023. Item G, approve the financial report for month of July 2023. Item H, approve the claims list for September 19th, 2023. And item I, authorize the mayor and city clerk treasurer to execute a joint powers agreement between the state of Minnesota on behalf of the Bureau of Criminal Apprehension and the city of Winston to participate in the Minnesota Anti-Heroine Task Force Program and receive overtime reimbursement as allowed under the Community Oriented Policing Services Anti-Heroine Task Force. That's the consent agenda. I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I motion to approve the consent agenda as presented and I abstain from voting on item E.
You have a motion, you have a second.
I'll second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion carried. We have two public hearings tonight. Before we get into it, just a little guideline so everybody knows what to expect. First of all, we thank you for attending the city council meeting tonight to take part in the annexation, public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing this evening is to obtain comments in regards to the annexation of city-owned and other parcels. Participants who plan to speak have been requested to sign in prior to the public hearing. Those who have not yet signed in prior to the beginning of the hearing may speak after those that signed up in advance. Each speaker will be asked to provide his/her name and address and is limited to three minutes unless additional time is granted by the mayor. We ask that you speak into the microphone at the desk so viewers at home can hear you. Citizens are urged to be polite and quiet as comments are made. Everyone is asked to abide by these guidelines so that the public hearing process can proceed smoothly and all who wish to speak have the opportunity to do so. So with that, I'll turn it over to Neil. If you can take it from there.
Yes, so as you mentioned, we have two different ordinances that we are looking to get information on tonight. And the first one has several of our city properties and then the second one has other properties that are within our town's borders and I'm looking to turn it over to Mr. Anderson, our planning zoning consultant.
Good evening. We have, as Neil said, we have two ordinances before tonight. The first ordinance would be city-owned properties that are currently within the township. And just kind of a little background, this goes back about a year or more where discussion started about looking at some of these properties and there was a meeting where the township, I believe, was invited and there was, I think, like 30 properties maybe discussed and it was kind of narrowed down to the parcels that we have before here tonight. The first ordinance, obviously, with the city-owned properties being four of them, was kind of a no-brainer. The city owns them and they're, you know, gonna be annexed into the city and be part of the city of Winstead. The other public hearing is properties that are completely surrounded by the city of Winstead borders, so they also can be annexed by ordinance and a public hearing which is happening here tonight. And in that case, there is a list of, I believe, it's six parcels total that would be completely surrounded. And this has been looked at, I know, and discussed with municipal boundary adjustments at the state of Minnesota and this is the correct process. I know there's ordinances that have been prepared by the city attorney and myself that are out there, ready for you to look at. And unless you have specific questions on individual parcels, that's about all I have here tonight, so.
I think what we'll do then is open the public hearing then for the city-owned properties. And if there's anybody has any questions or comments on that, step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Okay. We'll move on to the second one. Second ordinance would be annexation completely surrounded properties. Then anybody want to step up and state your name?
My name is Aaron Kubash. I live at 179 West Gate. I have a question before I start. Are you going to be voting on this tonight? Yea or nay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. As to each individual parcel or whatever, okay. Just a little history, in 1998 or so, I am part of a company called Limitless. We purchased our property, the PID number ends in 180. It's in back of Oshu Implement there. And so we did that in 1998 and about six years ago or so, we sold about two acres to Dollar General. At that time, that property was annexed. And so I really think the city established a precedent at that point and they annexed that and they left the rest of the property alone. Nothing really changed. We were surrounded then, we're surrounded now, whatever. I would suggest that the city follow this same precedent and not annex this property until it is sold or until it's built upon or whatever. Our taxes, Mr. Schlegel gave me the information, our taxes will go from about $72 to $1,200, which is a 1,500% increase. Limitless would not benefit from being annexed. Nothing would change. We don't need fire protection, you know, that sort of thing that the city would provide in annexed property. It just seems that it would make sense to do it when, again, as you did in the past, when it's built upon or sold. So I guess that's my speech. Any questions?
I think, Aaron, it's whoever the property belongs to, at some point in time, it's gonna be painful to bring it into the city. And this is something that we've been looking at for doing for 20 years. And it's part of correcting our maps and not, you know, and like say, for example, there was a piece of property that was in the township, but it was within the city. Somebody could have cows there if they wanted to. So I think what we're trying to do is just bring it into the municipality and bring it under our regulations.
I appreciate that, Mr. Holig, but you must see my point that it's gonna cost us
I understand.
Money. And right now, all it is, and that's on us, of course, right now, it's just, we pay taxes and we have the grass cut and, you know, that's just the way it is. And so I understand that, but I guess I'm making my pitch and that's, I guess, what I, what I'm trying to bring up, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions? When will this one be voted on then?
It'll be in the, with all of them.
So it's gonna be a blanket voting, like all or nothing, or what? For each individual one?
It's set up for the five different properties, seven, all at once.
All at once? Okay. I guess, I wish you could vote on each individual one on its merits. It is what it is, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Frank Sterner. I represent SJP Material Handling. And I guess, so you've been talking about it for 20 years. Yeah, I kind of know that because we had the issue once before upon us and cost our company a lot of money back then. Now we're right back to it and he says he's been working on this for a year. Why in a city of so few people do you not talk to the property owners that you were intending to do this? Why, I guess to me, it's a lot of closed board meetings, it seems like. I read the notes in there, there's no public, you know, opinion on anything. Never even knew it was being talked about.
Frank, Frank, every workshop the council has or council meeting is open to the public and the agenda is always on our website, so anybody can go and look at it.
Wouldn't it be nice though, as a community though, to talk to the people?
I thought you and Neil have had quite a few conversations.
After this has been bought to me that you're gonna vote on it, you know? And then I guess I'm just taking a look at it's all or none, you know, right now and it sort of seems to me you guys already have your mind made up. So I guess to me, I think it's really kind of a shame that you guys are taking the tax money away from the county when the county could probably use it a whole lot more than what you do, you know? They can't expand their area. Their area is, you know, finite. You know, you guys can creep into their territory and I kind of feel kind of bad for the county because
Frank, the county will still get theirs. The county still gets their portion.
Not the same as the township, right?
The township doesn't. The county does.
Okay.
County gets the same.
And just, just so there's clarification, Frank, we met with the township a year ago and started this whole process with them, so they've been aware of it.
I don't know if it was a year ago, I think it was in December, I think, is when they first came to me to tell me that I know anything about it. I said I know nothing about it, you know? I mean, I look in the papers for the meetings, I guess I gotta start taking a look at minute notes and that kind of stuff, but I just find it, you know, so much of our government is always behind closed doors. We don't talk to each other anymore. Really find that kind of shameful in such a small community. But I guess to me, my argument, because, you know, I already think that you guys already made your decision, so probably can't stop that, you know? I'm tired of throwing legal fees at anything anymore, so I don't want to do that. But let me ask you, have you consider, okay? I got along well with the township and I got along with the county and so forth as far as the different ordinances that were passed. As you know, what, 20 some years ago, this city came against us and it made us change everything around our business, you know? And cost us, you know, a wrath of God out there. And I went back to the city, I bought property in the city. One reason I didn't want to touch the elevated property, guys asked me about, because it was in the city. I don't want any more arguments, okay? Hey, I have no problem with this board here, you know? Haven't heard from you guys until this is your point, but previous administrations here, you know, was an issue. But I guess I'm looking at right now is that I have certain variances and everything that were given to us, you know, from the county. Are you gonna allow us the same privileges to be able to live and operate our business as we are currently today? Or what variances are you guys going to, you know? I mean, I gotta look at it because, I mean, it has to be documented.
Other than bringing the property that you own into the city, there are no plans to do anything else? Nothing?
But am I going, I guess I want it on the record that I'm not going to have to do anything more than what I have done right now to comply with the county?
No, you're in compliance now.
But not all with the city rules. None of us, all the city rules have changed.
What, give me an example.
Screening, fencing.
Oh, we, that was when you started the business.
So many plants that have to be on my borderline. I have to have all these different things in place for you guys. I can't have materials stacked beyond so high, okay? The material on my yard right now all has variances to it.
Frank, I don't think anything is gonna change. Actually, some of the property I think is in your building, isn't it? Is actually in the building?
Well, I got my rack on the outside, you know, facing Baker, one of the properties that you, you have there right now, okay? You don't have a thing where I can store above. I had to go to a variance, you know, before to get my other property done. So I'm just looking. Am I going to get the same thing for my property right now that I don't have to comply with those rules?
The property that you have right now, nothing will change. Now, let's say five years from now, you want to expand, then there'll be things we have to talk about. But as far as the way your business currently exists, nothing will change other than those pieces of property will come within the city limits.
So as far as screening and that kind of stuff, I do not have to change anything?
Nothing should change.
My height restrictions and that are all gonna stay in place?
Yes.
That, everyone agree on that? Because I mean, I got one guy talking, you know?
As long as you don't change anything, so we're talking, just so people are clear, this property right here is one and then this little, anyone that goes through the buildings and the old railroad property, as long as nothing changes here, like you don't try to go up another 20 feet or something, which obviously be dangerous, but I think the south half is still in the county.
Yeah, right now, I only have screening on Baker and down 50 feet on the sideline, okay?
50 feet over here.
Yep. That's what the county wanted me to do, okay? So am I gonna have any other issues?
That's still the same. I mean, this would be the same. So that would be the same.
Shouldn't change.
Okay. And then on the backside, on the side there.
This backside is already in the city.
I cannot, okay, I mean, one of your ordinances, okay? I'll just remind everyone about, because I lost the property that Millburn enjoys now that was given to Jimmy Cook. You know, I had a 100-foot setback all the way around. Did you guys change that rule? Because that's 100 feet off of every, all the sidelines.
That must have been something between Millburn's and Cook's.
No, that was, again, that's why I sold that piece of property. It was 400 by 400 by 400. Take 100 feet all the way around the building, what did I end up with? You know? You know, so, I mean.
We didn't change anything, Frank, that I know of.
Well, then that ordinance would still be in place. So my setbacks for storage onto my property lines, is that gonna be okay then? That I got a zero setback?
Yes, it should be.
It should be. Okay. You know, so.
There's nothing that I know of, and I can't speak for the rest of the council, that would change anything the way you do it today.
Well, that's what I want basically in the record because I don't want to have to be changing my operation again.
So without, let's do it this way, sir. But without a material change in your business and if you operate the way it is today, I guess I can't speak for the council, but as a city, I would say that we are willing to keep it the same way. Without, as long as you don't say, hey, I'm gonna put up a huge building here now or something.
If I put in a building, I gotta get a permit.
Correct.
I can't put cows on my property, sorry, I'm on High 1, you know?
When we talked about that.
I can't do that, so that's not a worry, you know?
There's a few things that we don't need to worry about, right? Because this is already in the city, so everything down here is still county, okay? So that doesn't change or doesn't have any effect with what we're doing with you, right? This, this part is city. So this property right here is currently zoned city. This one here is not, that goes right through the middle. And this one here is not. These are the two that we are annexing. This is city. So we have a city property here and a city property here. What we're looking tonight is to make this one city and that city and
And I understand that. The only thing is I have written variances from the city to do what I'm doing right now. I, if you change this.
From the city or from the county?
From the city, okay? So I have that for my current property. I don't have that, I got it for the county in that property.
Got it.
In the county for the back property. I just want to enjoy the same thing that I have today.
Yes, you're
As long as you don't change the way you're doing business, I see no reason why we would change what you're doing.
Let me ask you, what is change of doing my business? I mean, I'm not gonna go higher than my height than I'm there now.
Exactly.
You know? And I'm, you know, I got the fence there, you know?
As long as you don't
And the racking, any different from the county lot to the city lot?
No, there is none, you know? But I had to get variances, you know?
Right.
You know, and that's what I want to make certain.
So do you have a variance with us right now with this?
For just those lots, for lots 320 and 1400.
And you already have that?
I have that, you know?
I would say that we should certainly consider extending those variances to this property and if that's what you're asking for.
But the only thing, yeah, the only other difference would be is, is that that would do for my storage of the height of my material, the rack, but that does not say anything about the screening, okay? And the setbacks, okay? The setbacks, you know, are, you know, that's different. So, I mean, I just want the same setbacks, the same way I want and just enjoy my property the way I am. So I mean, so if you put where your cursor is there to the left, okay?
Over here.
Right, that line, okay? Yes, rack stacked on it. There's, because I got a zero setback on that property line, okay? So same thing along the fence line, I got a zero setback on that property line or on my fence line.
By Baker.
I had to be so far for the fence to be off of the street. But my operation, I was given a variance to be able to store on that line, you know? So that's what I want to just continue to enjoy.
I don't see anything changing. I don't see a reason to change.
Yeah.
I mean
It's in the public record now.
No matter what, I just disagree. I wish you could give it to the township, but, you know, I want to make certain that my operation is not being changed.
The city is not.
You don't add a building or anything, I see no reason for us to come bother you.
Well, let me just take a look here now.
What's that?
That is, yeah, no, I don't. We have a building planned, but I would rather move that into the county. I'm right on the border, so.
That's fine. You know, we're not here to cause you any hardship or cause you to have to change the way you do business. We're simply annexing some properties, something that runs through the middle of your buildings into the city and everything else stays the way it was.
But it's still running through my buildings, nothing really changes, so what do you gain? My tax dollars, you know?
We're just, we're, like I said, Frank, we're trying to clean up things that should have been cleaned up years ago. And how this ever happened the way it is, I don't know, but it should have never happened this way.
Well, yeah, in reality, property 0320, if you go back into the lawsuit before, with us, you know, from back then, the property should be in the county. It should never be in the city. Tell you the truth, I gave up on it because I was spending so many dollars in attorney's fees to fight it. And when you guys drag your feet, you know, I have to give up at some point in time. There's a point of no return.
Well, if your biggest concern was that you would have to change the way you're doing business or that we would say you need fencing here or whatever, that's not gonna happen.
As long as we have that, you know?
Yes.
On record.
It is on record, yeah.
That's my biggest concern right now, because I feel there's no stopping you, so, anyway.
All right?
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank. Anybody else?
Uh, yeah.
We'll need, you missed, we'll need your name and address for the records.
Okay, Marco Shu, owning the property at 136 Street South. And Jean Oshu, my sister. And we did submit a letter to the city administrator and city attorney and hopefully you all got what our concerns are there.
Yes.
And I guess, you know, we don't really see a reason for annexing our property right now and we're, we've been doing a lot of improvements on the property. Jean and I are both old, or eventually it's, it's gonna get sold at some point, given our ages and hopefully the sooner the better. So it seems like it would be prudent for the city to annex our property at that point when the ownership changes and most likely, we believe that the property owned by Kubash is maybe combined with the new owner wanting to see to consolidate that nice piece of property on the corner for a commercial use. So Jean, do you have something?
No, I, I totally, Mark, whatever Mark said, I totally agree with is that, you know, we just think it's premature, that, you know, we have nothing against the annexation per se. It's just that we don't see any reason for it because the only good, we're not gonna get any change, you know, we aren't gonna get any other city services, there's, you know, no fire, water, sewer, police, nothing that we need for that extra property. The only thing it's gonna do is cost more in property taxes.
With no services?
With, yeah. So there's no benefit to us.
You did mention combining these properties. I just want to ask Mr. Anderson a quick question. I assume that if this became one commercial property, the new person would have to annex into the city.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct? So my fear as, from a city standpoint would be a new person does come and buy these two properties and then we don't have zoning control over that because that's a township. So not yours, which is already in the city, or the one with the building, I'm sorry, the one with the building here, but these two, if somebody did combine those, we would not have the zoning over that because it's currently, you know, township, but it's within, it's smack dab in the middle of our city borders.
Right, but isn't the township zoning on that? Because they just increased the, our taxes on the little piece next to the substation because they changed it from farmland to commercial industrial or something, so.
And that might be, I don't know what the township zoning is, but what I'm saying is that we don't control what the township zoning would be.
Right.
We do control what the city zoning would be and this is, like I said, smack dab in the middle of the city.
But anybody buying our, the city-owned property or the stuff that's within the municipality right now, if they were going to be buying the rest of it, I don't think they'd want to have it separated. That doesn't make sense. I know it's possible.
Then you're, we should put it together.
And we have no intention of doing anything with that property other than maintaining it, so.
Yeah, I would love to see that whole thing be together and, you know, maybe it goes back to being a car dealership or something and that whole spot, that'd be awesome for the city. But it is in the middle of the city.
Well, it's kind of all supposed to be the, our property in the first place was a whole property dispute that we ended up having to settle.
Yeah, I don't know any of that and I don't know the history on that and as you guys know and we've talked a little bit, I've only been in this spot for a few months, but I have a hard time believing and I did mention this with Mr. Kubash as well, that this is not considered a city property. this is not considered a city property when it's smack dab in the middle of the city. I, I just have a hard time with that. Personally, from a city standpoint and a city planning and zoning standpoint.
Yeah, except there's no planning, there's nothing to do. You don't have to do anything with it. And that's even a better reason if it's a part of the city, you can ignore it completely.
That's false because it is in the middle of the city. So I can't ignore it completely because if somebody puts something in there, I'm going to have to answer the questions to it, right?
No.
Okay, yeah. Well, I can turn them to the township, but there's still, nobody's going to believe me that that's not in the city. That's, I mean, that's just where we're at.
Yeah, but, you know, there's municipalities all over the country that have little, little quirky borders.
There are.
Going on, depending on, you know, uh, you know, think of the sovereignty of, of, of a native tribe, you know? There's all sorts of...
See, none of those things are leading me to say, yeah, I don't want to do this. Anytime you say, yes, think of the sovereignty of it and see, think of what we can do, that worries me from a city standpoint.
We could come up with some kind of a covenant when we sell, couldn't we, to say that it has to be annexed to the city?
I'd, I'd turn that to Mr. Anderson, that question. I have no idea if that's some road we'd want to go down. I have, I don't know on that. If you're, if you're willing to do that, then what is the real holdup right now? Is it just the extra tax dollars? I mean, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
So is there any way that the, since we're not going to be getting any extra services, and I imagine this would apply for Kubas' property as well, is there any way that we could keep the tax base where it is now rather than paying the, the increase that would come with municipal taxes?
So part of the reason you're not getting any extra services is because you're already getting some services, right? And I know on this property in particular, you don't necessarily need police protection, but we do drive by there often, right? We are observing that, that spot. So we do give you those services that you are currently not paying towards because you're paying towards a township. The fire, you already are, that, you know, that fire protection, because that's all part of our township, Winston Township's part of our fire district. So that you already are paying for.
But there's no water and sewer on that property.
But no, you're correct. There's not.
If one parcel of your property is good enough to be in the city limits, why aren't both of them? Again, we are trying to correct an oversight. Whenever your property was first brought into the city, it should have all been done at the same time.
We didn't own the property then.
Well, it's been in your family for how many years?
I mean... The parcel next to the substation wasn't owned, and the only reason why we approached the city to be annexed was that our, our septic system had to be replaced. And so as opposed to having a huge mound on the property, we decided to, my father was very reluctant about coming into the city to get water and sewer. So, uh, and that was, that was, that was over 20 years ago, probably 25 years ago when that happened.
Yeah, and if it wouldn't have been for that, we would still wouldn't be in the city.
Yeah.
Or you might be.
Right. Only ever made.
So, yeah, that's, uh, you know, kind of where we're at with this. And I don't know, is there any legal way that you can give us a break on taxes on both our property and Kubas'?
We'd have to look. I don't know if, I, I, I would think not initially.
My concern is it wouldn't be just your...
Just out of curiosity, why did the dental clinic get a break on taxes?
It, it wouldn't be just your property. It'd be everybody's property that we're talking about tonight. We'd have to give everybody the same benefit that we'd give to you and Kubas'.
It, it opens a Pandora's box for future.
So...
And the clinic, the dental clinic was different. They did a, a lot of physical improvements to the building and putting them in a tax increment financing district, um, helped them to be able to afford those improvements, which made a nice business for Winstead.
That was an abatement, right? Yeah. Not a TIF.
Yeah. All right, yeah.
Well?
I don't know, we spent as much on the building as they did.
Not quite.
Well, not inside, but outside.
I, I will admit, you've done a lot of work there.
Yeah, you know, the property was pretty much neglected for a good decade or decade and a half, maybe even more. And, you know, we've stockowed, we've re-roofed, we've insulated, we've landscaped, uh, we've done an awful lot of work there. And so, do we qualify for a tax abatement for, for those improvements?
When was it built?
It was finished in 1949, but it's over a 70-year-old.
And what car, what cars?
Gone Deer Dealership.
Is that what it was? Okay.
And it was built to their spec.
Yep. Do you, does your family still have the farm?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's in the township.
Yes, sir.
You're a little too far away.
That would make a nice housing development.
There you go.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, well, I don't know if it did any good, but at least you heard our point of view.
Sure.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. The, oh, sure.
No, you'll get a blight notice.
So what's the rule?
Twelve, I think. Isn't it, Justin?
Well, you'll, you'll only get a blight notice if neighboring property owners complain.
That's not true.
Oh, yeah. That's not necessarily accurate, yes, but... Do you think you've gotten over that yet? Have you been over the 12 inches, do you know?
I mean, it's...
It's probably...
We make an exception for you, I guess we make one for somebody else. I don't, I don't see us doing that. That's just my opinion.
Yeah. I don't see a reason to make an exception.
I mean, if I had, well, in a year like this one, you probably didn't get over it. If you mowed it four times, you probably never got over 12 inches.
Well, with a blight notice, what happens? You get a notice and then you have so much time to correct it. So by the time the end of that timeframe is up, your tenant is probably cutting it again, right? So it'll be a nuisance perhaps to get a letter, but are we ever going to need to enforce it? Probably not.
Yeah.
Right. So on behalf of the council, we apologize for the letters to come, right? But, uh, but we also know that you are a, a good steward of your land, and you'll have whoever's cutting your hay come and cut it, right? So.
Why do you want hayland in this?
We don't. Again. We don't want those in there. Now we, yeah. We want to be able to do that. That's good.
Okay, we'll get back. Anybody else?
I have, um, one more property here, property owner, and he wasn't going to make it tonight, and he is okay with the annexation. Um, this is Chad Gugamis' property. This is the property that we'd be annexing in. He had a few questions, we talked through them. He understood it. Didn't necessarily say, jump up and down and say yay, but he understood it. This is, uh, next to Milliburns.
Yeah.
I, I used to live there many moons ago. It's the old Schlegel, my grandma and grandpa's, you know, place. And Chad is there now, yes.
Hey, anybody else? Last call.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, we're looking for a couple of motions then.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to adopt ordinance zero, oh, dash twenty-three, dash oh, oh, four, uh, zero, four, annexing land located in Winstead Township, McLeod County, Minnesota pursuant to Minnesota statute four, one, four, uh, point zero, three, three subdivision two, permitting annexation by ordinance.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Looking for a second motion?
Mr. Mayor, a motion to adopt ordinance zero, dash twenty-three, dash zero, five, annexing land located in Winstead Township, McLeod County, Minnesota pursuant to Minnesota statutes four, one, four, dot zero, three, three subdivision two permitting annexation by ordinance.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
A motion, second all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I would like to thank everybody for coming in and keeping the topic civil and something that we could talk about. I mean, I did enjoy our conversations ahead of time as well. Um, it's refreshing to see in a, a city, so I appreciate that.
This, if anybody wants to stay for the rest of the meeting, they certainly may. We've got quite a bit to go, and if you want to leave now, fine. It's up to you guys. Okay, under old business, there's nothing. Under new business, we're going to talk about, uh, tax increment financing requests for Winstead Leased Housing LLC.
Yes, I would like to introduce, Shannon, we had a meeting, is that last night? We had a meeting last night?
Last week.
For the...
Last week.
That's what I said. Last week for the Economic Development Association. And, um, we talked about this in particular, and I'm going to let Shannon read through those particulars because he's, well, that's what we pay him for.
Sure. Not yet.
Not yet.
Uh, great, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The city has received a request for tax increment financing assistance from Winstead Leased Housing LLC for the construction of 65 apartment units in the Grasslake Farm Third Edition subdivision. They've requested 25 years of assistance or reimbursement of new property taxes that would be generated as a result of what they are intending to construct. In order for it to be eligible to receive tax increment financing assistance, at least 20% of the units would be, need, be made available to tenants below 50% of area median income by family size. Uh, that's a requirement under Minnesota statute. Uh, based on the TIF projection, which utilizes a valuation estimate from the county assessor and the 2023 property tax rates, the project is estimated to generate $138,737 in gross tax increments each year. That's new property tax in addition to what's currently be paid, being paid on the vacant property. That would be city, county, and school district tax. That would be retained by the tax increment district. So the developer would pay the property tax on the new construction to the county. The county would separate that portion, which is defined as tax increment under state statute, which is estimated to be $138,737 a year. And that would in turn be reimbursed to the city for purposes that are, you can use it for under state statute, including reimbursement to the developer for specific costs associated with the project. Developers indicated that the cost of the public improvements, the street extensions, et cetera, are excessive along with construction inflation associated with the project, which is, uh, ultimately is part of the reason they are requesting this assistance. Additionally, two of the projects that they've implemented, uh, most recently did receive tax abatement assistance, which is a similar form of assistance where there's a reimbursement of property tax. In that instance, I believe it was just city-only tax.
Are abatements as long as TIF districts?
No, no. Um, ultimately, abatement under Minnesota statute is 15 years maximum duration unless another, uh, unit of government declines in writing to participate, and then it can be extended to 20 years. Uh, they've indicated that since those projects were implemented, uh, they've had significant inflation in construction costs, plus they're undertaking more public improvements here than they've undertaken in prior projects. So, uh, they're indicating they have a more expensive project to implement, uh, by a fairly wide margin. And based on my experience, uh, I expect that's true, or it is true. So, uh, uh, doesn't mean it has to be provided in the form of assistance, but ultimately it's a rationale that's used, uh, by any number of cities that we work with as a firm for similar projects. It's easy to, uh, have folks say that all of a sudden they're looking at this assistance and say that it's subsidized housing and we're drawing a different element to the community. This housing is market rate housing as it's developed in a lot of your neighboring communities. Two phases in Glencoe. A second phase was approved in Anadale most recently that we've worked on. Uh, St. Peter has done half a dozen or more projects where TIF assistance is provided to provide workforce housing for their community.
So being new to the council, I have a question in regards to this. We're, we're calling it market rate housing, but the stipulation is you have to offer a reduced...
No. You, no. Uh, the rents are whatever the landlord chooses to charge. He has to make 20% of the units available to folks of a specific income. And so he has to recruit or attract, which can be seniors, it can be students, it can be any number of folks, but it does not require them to charge a specific rent.
Well, there wouldn't be any, like HUD subsidy?
No.
No.
This is imposed by state statute exclusively for the use of TIF for housing projects. And it's applied on housing, all rental housing that's supported by a housing TIF district. This isn't the first project that's approached the city of Winstead or that we've tried to recruit that has asked for TIF assistance. All of them have. And they've all fallen apart before they got this far. Not for, not because we didn't provide a TIF assistance, but for economic reasons or changes in the marketplace or just scared investors.
Sure. And it was more just understanding the process that I asked the question.
Yep. Well, I want to make you aware of a little bit of history as well because we've run projections on any number of projects. Um, again, not trying to endorse, just trying to inform you as a council to help you make a decision that's appropriate for your community, so.
Mr. Mayor, at the EDA meeting, the builders were there, and, um, they're very excited about coming into Winstead. Uh, the apartments they are building are nicer than a lot of apartments. Granite countertops. Um, there'll be one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments. Uh, the, we asked about rent, and it sounded like the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Shannon, the one-bedroom would be about $1,100 a month, the two-bedroom around 14. But those would include utilities except for cable, television, and internet.
And each unit, Tom, had a, their own washer and dryer and...
They have their own washer and dryer, right.
They encouraged anyone interested in looking at other projects that they've developed, and they offered to, you know, make a unit available to look at and those kinds of things.
And the timing on it, they were going to start construction towards the end of next summer?
July, August.
Yeah, and with occupancy in, um, May or June of 2025.
Just to describe the action that's before you, this evening, it's not to improve, uh, a TIF plan or to provide this assistance. It's been requested at this time. If you choose to proceed, the resolution in your packet is a resolution calling a public hearing, which would be held on November 21st. What would happen between now and November 21st is a tax increment financing plan would be drafted. It's a document, uh, required by statute that defines the area to be included, the budget for the TIF district. required by statute that defines the area to be included, the budget for the TIF district, uh, the duration, uh, the impact to the county and the school district as well as the city, and that's information that we have to provide to both the county and school district with an invitation to the public hearing, a comment on the action that would be before the council at that time. Uh, but a fair amount of work gets done with the expectation that we're going to do something with that TIF district, so if we have reservations, now's the time to decide. I'm here to answer your questions and determine if it's appropriate or not.
So, regarding size, there's additional land out there that is zoned residential. Is that going to be part of the TIF, or is it just the two apartment buildings?
My recommendation is that you include it for now because you would have incurred the expense of creating a district one time that you have the possibility of using additionally at your discretion. Uh, just because you've included it doesn't mean that there's a subsidy that's going to occur.
So we don't necessarily have to use it?
No, it's entire, each, the only time that you're using tax increment, I'll put that in air quotes, is when you enter into a specific development agreement for a specific project outlining terms and conditions for providing assistance. Short of that, you're not doing anything for anybody. Uh, you've created a district that has?
So then do you amend it if another project arises, or?
Well, the reason, the reason I would suggest that we include it now is that you don't have to hire me again to amend it. Uh, you can simply, simply consider whether or not you wish to do another project.
Just because it's there doesn't mean we have to use it.
No, you do not have to use it.
But, and also the fact that it's there might appeal to a, to a kind of builder.
Correct. Uh, I think ultimately, uh, we're hoping that this project proves the market in Winstead for being able to support new construction for rental housing at these rent levels, and if we're successful, we'll see additional development that we would have to subsidize hopefully at a lesser extent in the future.
The builders did tell us they built a twenty-unit in Dassel, and it was full in six weeks.
With very similar, except for Winstead's are going to be ten percent larger on it?
Correct, yes, they are larger, yes.
The other piece to this, again, would be, as you guys are aware, but they are incurring the cost of putting in some public structure, meaning a couple of the roads and sewer and water.
So there'd be no cost to us regarding the road?
That's correct. That's what they indicated.
No cost, they are taking on that risk.
And that, that road will connect up to Mallard, correct?
Connect to Knight.
Oh.
Or all the way up to Main, Main, I guess.
Okay.
Yep.
And it's going to be not a, a small, a narrow road, but a street, whatever street size?
I, I have one other question regarding the admin retainage. Um, it's not going to cost us thirteen thousand dollars a year, too. So, but then the leftover, uh, there's some certain specifications. We can't use it for just anything, correct? Could you explain what we?
Absolutely. Uh, so what we explained at the EDA meeting and the developer was aware of is that it's customary and under statute legal to retain ten percent of the increment for administrative purposes, or frankly, for, uh, it can be used for the support of other uh TIF-eligible housing projects. And so if you accumulated this cash, you could use it in support of additional TIF-eligible housing. It would have to meet these income requirements if it was rental, uh, different ones if it's owner occupied, uh, or you could simply take the money, send it back to the county. It would be redistributed to the city, county, and school district based on your proportionate share of that property tax.
How long can we hold on to those funds?
You can hold on to it if ultimately you indicate that you have a plan for those proceeds, you can hang on to those for the life of the district.
Up, so up to twenty-five years?
Yes, with housing districts, uh, they're unique in that you can do that. Other forms of districts require you to have a plan for those within five years. Housing districts do not have that, but ultimately, if we're accumulating that money, we should have some idea of what we intend to use it for. Otherwise, we should return it to the county and have it redistributed.
I think we might be able to find something.
Yes, we have additional housing needs that I expect benefit from it, so.
Any other questions for Shannon? If not, looking for a motion?
I'd make a motion to adopt resolution R dash twenty-three dash thirty-six, calling for a public hearing on the modification of Municipal Development District Number Two, the approval of the modified development program related thereto, the establishment of Tax Increment Financing District Number Nine, and the adoption of a Tax Increment Financing Plan relating thereto.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Shannon.
Thank you.
Next item is local road improvement program for grant applications, Zion Avenue. Neil?
Yes, so, and speaking with the city engineers, they have made us aware of the local road improvement program, which is LRIP, that, that they haven't quite come out with what uh the maximum amount will be, but they estimate that to be one point two-five million dollars that we can receive in assistance. We are looking at completing the number-two project in our street management plan, which would be Zion Avenue, and making that more of a city street with curb gutter and, and just improving that. Uh, what we're seeking today would be to see if we are eligible for that grant, which would cost approximately seventy-five hundred, not to exceed eight thousand dollars, in order to go out and hopefully get a good portion of our costs covered for that road improvement.
Neil, for those that don't know, could you explain where Zion Avenue is?
Zion is, I can, um, it's out by Winston Lake, so it'd be from, and I guess I can show you, and, because it's County Road Twenty, or Linden, depending on where we're at in the county, but Zion will run from right here at Lake Drive, all the way out to Two Hundred Forty-Fifth Street, I guess, is what it is on this map, so. I don't know, for those of you that are driven out there, there's a reason that it's number-two. Project number-one was already completed in twenty-twenty-two, so there's a reason that this one is on our list of properties that we would like to take care of.
Anybody have questions for Neil? If not, looking for a motion?
Make a motion to consider authorizing Bolton and Mang Incorporated to complete and submit an application on the behalf of the city of Winstead for a local road improvement program grant for a cost not to exceed eight thousand dollars to fund improvements for Zion Avenue.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
A motion is second all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We've come to the St. John's uh portion of the meeting tonight, and there's like one, two, three, four, five different items. So Neil, you want to take us off into that journey?
Um, I will. As you are aware, St. John's is looking to build a new church, um, I guess north of Westgate, and we're going through a lot of the different steps, trying to take care of those and clean up some things here. I had a chance to talk to Mr. Horniman today, and we talked a little bit about the property, and I think we're, we're very close. So I'm going to ask Mr. Anderson to come back up and fill us in on that a little bit more.
Can you zoom in on that so the people at home can see what area we're talking about?
Well, I can.
All right, good evening again. Um, so we have some requests here from St. John's Lutheran Church, uh, to allow for a new church to be constructed on this property, and there's multiple applications that we've been reviewing and has gone through planning commission recommendations. Uh, there's a preliminary and final plat application where they would plot the property showing up on the screen there. There'd be a lot kind of on the western side of that that we plotted as Lot One, Block One. Uh, the balanceup will be plotted as an outlot. There we go. Uh, Outlot A would be over on the west side next to Grass Lake Road, where Right-Away would be dedicated for the roadway itself. Outlot B would be on the east side of the property adjacent to County Road One out there. That would be held for future development at, at some point in time. Um, that's the preliminary and final plat. Uh, the other items are a conditional use permit. The property is currently zoned R-one A, and churches are allowed as a conditional use in that district. So we did go through a conditional use, uh, public hearing, and that was recommended for approval. And there was also a site plan review for the church itself, and this looked at things such as the driveway access, uh, off-street parking, landscaping and screening the adjacent uses and different things of that nature. Um, a couple items I'd like to discuss in regards to the overall review, uh, real quick, have to do with items in relation to the plat itself. So as part of the plat, um, we have different agreements that get put in place and recorded at the same time the Mylar plat copies go in for recording at the county. One would be a development agreement, um, that has basically been worked through and in process for review right now and, and stuff by the city attorney. Another would be an encroachment agreement and right-of-way easement. The right-of-way easement would be along the south sixty feet of the property, and this would go from Westgate Drive all the way over to Grass Lake Road. This easement would be granted by the property owners, uh, to the city of Winstead for future, uh, road right-of-way. Not saying that a road is ever going to be built there, but it would give the city that ability at some point in time in the future if they wanted to make that connection, which would be kind of an east-west connection, um, coming from County Road One through Westgate over to Grass Lake Road. Um, that easement area, uh, would be shown as a drainage utility easement on the plat, but also a separate right-of-way easement, which would allow the city to build a roadway if at some point in time it was needed. The church itself will be using that, uh, right-of-way area, um, for their access. So it'll be a driveway constructed off Westgate Drive, um, that would go down that area to the church itself. But at some point in time, if a future roadway was constructed there, the driveway would basically just come off on that north-south location, and the driveway itself would be, um, removed, and a full city street would be built at that time. The last easement is a easement for ingress and egress purposes over a city property. Just south of this property, the city owns a twenty-foot strip of land for stormwater, uh, management purposes. This is actually a parcel that was brought in, one of the city-owned parcels on the annexation approval tonight. So technically, it's in the township, but it is currently being annexed. It is owned by the city, so the city will be granting an ingress/egress easement over that little strip of land for their driveway access to the property they actually own. Um, this currently, there is a stormwater pipe that runs through there. This shouldn't affect that, and all the engineering plans have been looked at by the city engineer, and at this point, we're at agreement on everything there. So what you have before you tonight are those four agenda items, um, resolutions there for approval. Uh, once those are approved, there are conditions that the easement agreements, the encroachment agreement, and development agreement will be finalized, and then when it goes in for recording those documents along with the plat itself, it'd be recorded, and then we'd have, um, um, everything squared away at that point. I know, uh, recently here, the city attorney's been working with the applicants on some of the title issues, and I know there's a condition that was added to the final plat approval regarding that all title issues and ownership items are finalized, which, what it would change would potentially be signature lines on the plat itself, not the plat lines or the documents of the lots, but the, just the signatures and, and official names. So nothing major there, it just needs to be squared away, and I know that is being worked on at this time, and we're at a point where we should be able to prove this with that condition and get everything satisfied. So if you have any questions, I guess I can take those.
So, so the driveway comes in, uh, just east of the first ho, house as you're?
Correct.
Okay.
So if you look at the map, up there is actually a lift station kind of just to the west of this driveway, so it would come in right at that corner there. Uh, city engineer did review that access point. They do have to cut, uh, the street there and repave an area. Uh, they need to connect, um, water and sewer at that location to bring that into the church itself. That is where the driveway would be located.
Anybody from St. John's want to comment about the project?
Yes, uh, we, uh, so it's being drafted right now, um, by the city attorney, and it would have to get, um, finalized. At this point, uh, we don't have a full draft in place, so it could come back to you guys for review. Uh, we do have a condition in there that it gets squared away, so if you're satisfied with that, we could probably handle that, but I guess it's really up to you if you want to see that or not from a council level.
I thought we were ready to go. Also, are we ready to go?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then let's start having some resolutions.
And make a motion to adopt resolution R dash twenty-three dash thirty-seven, granting approval of a preliminary plat known as St. John's Lutheran Church Edition, Winstead.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, second all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution R dash twenty-three dash thirty-eight, granting approval of the final plat known as St. John Lutheran Church Edition, Winstead.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next?
Consider, I'll motion to adopt resolution R dash twenty-three dash thirty-nine, granting approval of a conditional use permit allowing for religious institution in the R-one A single-family residential zoning district.
We have a motion. Looking for a second?
Second.
A motion is second all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next one?
Consider a motion to adopt resolution R dash twenty-three dash forty, granting approval of the site plan, allowing a church to be constructed in the R-one A single-family residential district.
Do you have a motion and a second?
Second.
And a second all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Congratulations, good luck.
Yes.
Welcome to Winstead.
Exciting.
You guys can stay for the open, uh, preliminary tax levy if you want, otherwise, otherwise you can go wherever you're going.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. We're looking forward to seeing it.
Thank you. Everybody wants to leave on my present.
Thank you.
Well, Neil, you want to hit the, uh, truth and taxation?
Not truth and taxation yet, but yes, I will, uh, go over the preliminary budget here, and you're going to hear the word preliminary throughout this, and that is exactly what it is. This is not a final budget, and I think it's important that the public understands that this is not a final budget. Uh, we are proposing this budget, and a final budget will be adopted at the end of December. I'm just going to dive right in. So we're going to talk a little bit about the preliminary twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four budget process. Again, there's some significant budget changes from the previous year. We have five-year budgeting model, and that was put in place to help council make educated decisions for the future. Preliminary twenty-twenty-four property tax levy is what we're talking about. There are other pieces to our budget that will not be talked about today, like sewer and water funds and airport and things that we will have to finalize before December. So we're only talking general and debt service property tax levies, and, and then maybe just some general discussion that we can have. Definitions, so revenue is money coming in, funds that we get from taxes, different fees, charges for services, permits, fines, and other sources. Expenditures is money that we spend, so things that are going out, such as services, supplies, repairs, improvements, salaries, utilities, and other activities. Uh, the general levy is property tax funds needed to fund the operating and capital expenditures of the city, so this is what we operate on. Uh, council, commissions, administration, public works, police, fire, parks, library, and you'll see all of those in here. Revenues minus expenditures is our general levy amount. The debt levy, we don't, those dollars have already been allocated, so we don't have a lot that we can move there. The good news is we didn't add any debt this year, so it does allow us to catch up on some of our general levy obligations. So the budget process, on July and August, when I was onboarding, we started to prepare the proposed twenty-twenty-four budget. August fifteenth, we had a work session to review recommended twenty-twenty-four general fund budget. Um, there were some suggestions there, so I made some changes to the budget. Again, we had another work session. Again, we had another work session, and then we are the spot that we are today, where I am presenting it because we need to have it adopted by the thirtieth. The rest of the process looks like this. We will have October third, additional city council work session to review recommended twenty-twenty-four budget if needed. Seventeenth will be the same before our council meetings. And the twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, somewhere in there, as we have discussed, we will have either half-day or all-day sessions to, to really try to iron out the details of what this budget is going to end up looking like. The fourteenth, the work session to review recommended twenty-twenty-four general fund budget prior to the truth and taxation for the public hearing. December fifth will be the truth and taxation public hearing, and then on the nineteenth, we need to adopt the recommended twenty-twenty-four budget and certify that recommended twenty-twenty-four general fund and debt service property tax levies. Yes, sir.
October twenty-third to October twenty-seventh, what's preventing us from setting a date on that? Specific date and time?
Uh, we will.
Well, some of us, my point being, if we could do it sooner than later.
Yep, I'm on board.
Okay, and then, God forbid, the twins make it that far, but we have to keep that in mind, so.
Okay.
Are they going to put money in our budget?
Well, we haven't had to worry about that for a few years, I don't think, in the budgeting process, but maybe we will have to this year. Who knows? But yes, we can keep that in mind. I think once we set that, you know, that is just us meeting, so we'll.
I get it.
Time. Yep.
I live by a calendar, so I kind of, the longer, the, the longer timeframe I have to plan, the better, so that's all I'm asking.
Yep, sounds good. And we can do that tonight if you guys want. I mean, after we're done here going through this. I'm open to setting it.
Sure.
All right, so here's our summary. Conservative revenue expenditure assumptions, continued implementation of the twenty-twenty-two compensation plan. That is up after twenty-twenty-four, the current compensation plan. We will most likely need to do a new study, another three-year plan, and see where we're at, see if we've caught up or, or where we're at with wages. Nine percent cost increase in employee benefits. Again, that is an assumption, not necessarily what it will end up being. Reallocation of current resources based on needs and versus the actual history. And right now, this budget supports the current complement of full-time equivalent, FTE, employees. So just something to keep into consideration. We're almost at the end of this piece where this slide needs to be updated, but we're going to adjust the multi-year funding strategy to support the street capital improvement program or the CIP that was adopted in the twenty-seventeen budget in recent years. That funding has been moved due to council wanting to keep the levy low. So just something to take into consideration. I believe this is the third year that we will be funding the Economic Development Authority, giving them a little bit of funding, and that is included in this again, another year. That seems to be working, as evidenced by tonight's meeting where we have had a lot of things going on. It does not include some of those property tax abatements that we have talked about in two thousand seventeen and twenty-twenty. Those are just on here for things to consider, that we will have future revenues coming. Just right now, they're delayed. This slide is going to be a little bit hard to see, but it gives you the last five year, or five years, four, last four years, I guess, and the proposed year of funding. So we have five thousand dollars that we're looking to transfer to facilities. And we're taking a big jump on parks in this proposal to, you know, fifty thousand dollars, a street improvement plan, upping that to one hundred fifty-eight thousand. Trails slash sidewalks still at six, and then looking to up equipment about twenty-one thousand dollars. Going through the recommended twenty-twenty-four general fund revenues, where does our money come from? The majority, or sixty-one percent, comes from property tax. Then we have some LGA, local government assistance through, from the state, that makes up thirty-one percent. And approximately, you know, eight percent, the remaining eight percent comes from fees, fines, different permits, different utility deals that we might have, and then just other miscellaneous income. This slide is going to be very messy. I tried to fix it, but I hopefully will have it fixed for the final one. But this is just to give you somewhat of a breakdown where our budget, that total expenditure budget of two million four hundred eighty-four thousand nine hundred two dollars, where the recommended expenditures are. So we have the general government piece. That's a, a larger portion, twenty-three percent. Public safety is twenty-seven. Public works is twenty. And you can see some of the other, the other pieces in there. I know there's a lot on this slide. Do you guys have any questions? Yeah, about that time, right? The five-year budget model, like we had mentioned, there are some assumptions that are built into that, but they're not limited to these. So these are just percentages that were put in and what we budgeted off of or predict, I guess. So looking at this, the preliminary levy, the per-state law, the city council must certify a preliminary property tax levy on or before September thirtieth of each year. The final property tax levy may be lower than the preliminary property tax levy, but cannot exceed it. So traditionally, Winston has set the levy higher, preliminary levy higher, and has decreased that significantly when going into the final. And I think that's important for people to understand that this is not the final levy. It will most likely, once we start diving in the details, will be brought down from here. But we cannot go up, so there's a lot of unknowns and a lot of variables that will happen from now until that December nineteenth date. So I think it's responsible to set it a little bit higher. City's property tax levy is comprised of two parts, the general levy and then the debt levy, like we have spoken about, and that will equal our property tax levy. Things to consider, market values continue to go up, property tax rates continue to decline as a result. What that means is the, you're not necessarily taxed at your full capacity rate. If you're in the city right now, you are not taxed at your full capacity rate. Um, your, this year was roughly sixty-five percent. In twenty-twenty-three, certified property tax levies increased by eight point four percent compared to the previous years. For the past three years, the average increase for city levies was five point nine percent, not five point nine seven. So we expect this upward trend to continue. I think, you know, if you're looking at the numbers, you can see we've gone on the lower side of most cities. Uh, we were notified that we have an increase in our local government aid of fifty-nine thousand dollars and one hundred fifty-two, fifty-nine thousand one hundred fifty-two dollars. That is included in this plan. Uh, here's the debt service levy. Again, might be hard for you to see. These are the items. These are our bonds that we have to pay back. So we don't have really any play on this part, and they total four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars for this year. And you can see some of those projects. We do have additional debt issued for water and sewer improvement projects that are taken care of through those particular funds. So it's not necessarily coming through on this debt service, not necessarily. It is not coming through. And here are two of those, the sanitary sewer refunding bond. And you can see in twenty-twenty-five, we'll have this amount, but the reason that this slide is on here, just to show that some of this debt will be coming off soon, within the next couple of years. Any questions? All right. So, general fund budget and property tax levy history. We're looking at one million four hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred and ninety-dollar general levy. And as you saw in the previous slides, the four hundred fifty-nine thousand dollar levy, or debt levy, or total levy of one million nine hundred fifty-eight thousand five hundred ninety, with a tax increase then, total tax increase of eleven point nine two percent. For twenty-twenty-four, the preliminary, uh, general property tax levy would increase sixteen percent, and the preliminary debt service would be point three seven percent, again resulting in eleven point nine two percent. And you'll see the same thing on the next couple of slides, just to get to your, your total. And again, this is just reiterating, reiterating what I've said multiple times. Preliminary property tax levy should provide us maximum flexibility regarding future budget decisions. Final property tax levy may be certified at a lower amount, but not higher than the preliminary property tax levy. Again, I think that's very important for everybody to understand. Oops, that's all I have for tonight. You guys have any questions? Are you still awake?
I just want to thank you for the, all the work you've done. I know this has been different for you this year.
It has.
And you've done well.
Thank you.
Yeah, for a first time, not too bad, but we're not through it yet.
Yeah, we'll see, right? The hard work will come.
Yeah, the tough stuff's ahead of us.
Yep.
I guess we're looking for a resolution to drop the preliminary levy.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number R-23-41, certifying the preliminary twenty-twenty-four general property tax levy of one million four hundred ninety-nine thousand five hundred and ninety dollars and the preliminary twenty-twenty-four debt service levy of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand for a total preliminary twenty-twenty-four property tax levy of one million nine hundred fifty-eight thousand five hundred and ninety dollars.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
A motion is second all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Come to the open forum section of the meeting if anybody wants to address the council. Step up to the podium, state your name. Pretty thinned out, so I don't think anybody's going to come up. City administrator, update and announcements?
I think I've talked enough tonight.
We'll take a motion on that. Okay, Tom, you have anything?
I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Nothing?
Looking for a motion to adjourn? I'll make that motion.
Second?
You have a motion and a second all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.